It's six o'clock, so we'll begin our regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council. Always starting with a laugh or a smile. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll deem the agenda as approved. There are no delegations, despite all the people that are in council chambers. The minutes of November 12th, 2019, regularly regular council meetings are there. Any errors or omissions? Hearing none. Oh, I skipped an announcement, sorry. We'll deem the minutes approved. Announcements?
Yeah.
Council Graves.
So, we have a number of announcements for Christmas on La Haye. So first, we have a family fun. Parade and fireworks start on November 30th at 6:00 p.m. The parade route is once again Empire down the King, along King to Dufferin. And this year, we currently have 70 floats registered.
Wow.
Fireworks are immediately after the parade. You can view them from the area of King Street and the old bridge. The north parcade is open, so that's going to open up the area as well. When you're at the parade, look at the front. We want, for the Canada Trust, Canada Post truck, employees will be picking up letters to Santa along the parade route. And all letters are answered, provided that you provide a return address. Hunger and poverty are big issues here in Lunenburg County in the South Shore, so please consider bringing a donation of cash or food to the Food Bank. Pure later Courier and the Seahawk Football Club will be picking up donations along the parade route. And our former town prior, As Ozzy Stiles, is this year's parade marshal, so congratulations, Ozzy. And parents, if you can, remember, you are responsible for your children, then let's be safe. What else do we have going on there, Cheryl?
Yes, we have contests. Best decorated storefront is being organized by the Chamber of Commerce. And we also have best decorated host contest. We have almost $1,000 in prizes to be won for the decorators and voters. Look at this week's Social Breaker for more information. We have the best decorated parade float, and we have prizes for best business and best community group.
And what else do we have, Cheryl?
Well, we have lots of lights. Lots and lots of lights. We encourage everyone to get out of their cars and walk downtown to Bridgewater to see how Bridgewater shines. The town tree is beautiful. Balsam fir donated by Marcus and Thomas Swicker of Walden. It is located on the lookoff at Bijanuskag Park. And we have the 4-H Community Forest is located at Brickside Cemetery. And as well, we have Christmas wreaths are all decorated out on King Street. And we have also dressed up the old bridge with some new lights this year. So they're some nice red lights, and they look sharp and really stand out. And new this year on Candy Cane Lane is the light tree and light ball clusters, you may have noticed. So they're located behind TD Bank, Wendy's, and Shell, and it's wheelchair accessible. And we'd also like to take time to thank our sponsors, Michael.
Great. So we have a big shout out to the Chronicle Herald, Gao's Home Hardware and their Christmas store, Bridgewater Farmers Co., Marcus and Thomas Swicker, Select King Street Merchants, the Atlantic Superstore, the South Shore Centre, the Bridgewater Volunteer Fire Department, Tasha Corkum, the Municipality of Lunenburg, the River Pub, and the Town of Bridgewater. For more information, you can visit, or pick up this week's Social Breaker, visit bridgewater.ca, or like the Town of Bridgewater on Facebook and Twitter. Hope to see you there.
Fantastic. And thank you to both of you and your volunteers and Council McInnes, who is not here tonight. But thank you to you guys for all the effort you put into it. Downtown looks fantastic. At night, especially, I know we've all received a number of comments from people about how it looks. And I was, kind of leads me into a bit of a segue. I had the privilege of taking two young doctors looking to relocate, having given them a tour of Bridgewater on Saturday. And the town was just bustling. So lots of people out in cars, yes, but lots of people out walking. The bus was full. I was telling staff, there was not a parking space available at the museum when we drove past. We literally could not have parked if we wanted to. It was packed. And lots of people walking, especially Candy Cane Lane, I noticed there, behind the TD Bank. The number of people, when you drive past and you just look down there, and you could tell they were out specifically for that, because they were stopped and they were looking at things. So the town looks fantastic. And when you are touring people around who don't live here and are looking at it through that lens of, would I like to live here? It's amazing to hear their feedback and what we sometimes forget excited us when we first moved here or thought of moving here. Things that we might take for granted now, and we all hear, oh, there's nothing to do, or there's nothing here. And I think it's easy to forget the things we have. So my takeaway this week was after condensing a tour of the town and trying to jam everything that we have into, it ended up being 90 minutes, there were things that I really didn't think about for a while. Of course, we all know the duck pond, but I take for granted that that's now fully accessible. Well, for this family, that was very important. And we go to the LCLC, sometimes we're just dropping people off, or we're going right to the library and forgetting that the pool is filled with young families. There was a hockey game taking place, and so there was a whole bunch of people from out of town and in town watching the hockey game. And some of the shops that these folks were excited that we had in our town, because they don't have it in their community, and it was on their list of things. I have to live in a town that has a movie theater. I have to live in a town that has a bulk barn. They were excited that there was a valley village coming. They had not heard of Frenchie, so they were super excited when they found out with that one. Things like that, that we just forget about. So that really, I posted about that today, about the perspective. But for them to then, that night, go out and get a tour, which I know they got, I know they were blown away with how the town looked. So I would encourage anyone, everyone, if you have not been out, it gets dark now at like four o'clock, I would encourage anyone to just go out, walk around. If you've got a scooter, then scoot around, drive around, and just look at how the town looks, because it does not look like it has ever looked before, I think. Certainly not in my memory. So hats off to everyone who's put in that effort.
Thank you.
Yeah, good job. Any other announcements? Council Thorburn.
Pretty hard to do the Saturday, November 30th, but on Friday, an important date, November 29th, at 9:30, the Bridgewater Mall, C entrance by the Food Court and Tim Hortons, there's lots of homemade cookies, sweets, and more. Get all your Christmas baking done for you, and the proceeds go to the Friends of the Desprez Museum. Annual Christmas Open Host at the Desprez on Saturday, December 7th, 2:00 p.m., Jubilee Road. Join us for the annual Christmas Open Host, music by the South Shore Ukulele Players. Festive refreshments, trivia, holiday exhibits, instant holiday photos, and more. A donation to the local Food Bank is appreciated. And on Saturday, the 14th, make a tabletop Christmas arrangement, 2:00 p.m., Desprez Museum. Advance registration by December 7th, $10 per person, limited to 10 people. Bring clippers and small festive container. Payment advance required to reserve a seat.
That's it for the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. Anyone else? I do just want to make an announcement, that November 21st was Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day. I received a touching email from someone in the community that just wanted us to kind of mention that, because I don't think we received any formal proclamation with that. But we've all been touched by the effects of cancer, whether it's someone in our direct family, or certainly extended relative or family friend. So that was November 21st. And so, you know, our hearts go out to everyone who's been impacted by cancer, especially pancreatic cancer at this time of year. Hearing no other announcements, we are down to planning items and development agreement application for 54 Pearl Street.
Thank you. So staff have received an application for a development agreement to construct a 30-unit collective residential development at 54 Pearl Street. So the property is just here with a star. It goes a little bit further that way as well. St. Philip's along here, the Centennial Trail, and there's access here off Pearl Street. So a collective residential development is a development that consists of more than one dwelling on one or more lots. This property is 14.8 acres, and the applicant intends to develop towards the east side of the property over near Pearl Street, while maintaining much of the forest on the rest of the property. The property is zoned as comprehensive residential, or R3, which permits collective residential development up to a maximum of 25 units per acre by development agreement. And with a 30-unit development, this puts them at slightly over two units per acre. This area, the surrounding area, has a mix of zoning and uses. So the surrounding zoning is different types of residential, including single unit, two unit, some more comprehensive residential, medium-density residential, and manufactured home zones, as well as some institutional, industrial, special, commercial, and park zoning nearby. There are single, two, and multi-unit residential uses here, as well as land-leased residential properties. There's also some commercial, institutional, park, and industrial uses nearby. The applicant intends to construct eight two-story townhouses that would be made up of a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. There would also be a shared outdoor space and a shared common house. The intent is to have the units grouped fairly close to one another in their development. And the development would also be a co-housing model, which is planned, financed, and owned by a group of people who become the residents. Within this, there would be privately owned homes and the shared amenities. The intent is for the property to have a deliberate, community-oriented design, and for the buildings to have a high degree of energy efficiency. Waste water and stormwater studies will be completed throughout the process, and staff will analyze the town's policy to determine if the development is supported in terms of compatibility with adjacent uses, servicing, transportation, the environment, and overall intent of the municipal planning strategy. So the next step is to host a public participation meeting, and it's recommended that council refer the matter to staff to undertake a public participation meeting in consideration of the development agreement on January 15th, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. here in Town Hall.
2020?
I know.
I think that's, I feel like that's the first thing we've planned now in 2020. All right, questions from? Council?
Someone's excited.
Yeah.
He really does.
Wow. So move this along. Someone prepared to make a motion. Council Thorburn.
I would move that Town Council refer the application for 54 Pearl Street to staff to undertake a public participation meeting in consideration of the development agreement on January 15th, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Town Hall.
Seconded by Council Frasier. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Great, thank you. Down to correspondence for information, there is a letter there for information from Cynthia and Charles Langel regarding a telecommunications tower. So there is a cell phone tower planned for, at the top of Aberdeen Hill. They are the adjacent property owners and have noted some of their concerns, and I had a meeting with them last week and noted those, and we'll pass those on to our MP as well as, that really does fall under federal jurisdiction. Staff has noted this is not exactly where we would want a cell phone tower, but at the end of the day, it, I believe it's Industry Canada that makes their decision where they want the tower to go, if I'm not mistaken.
They, yeah, and they had the last.
They had the last saying. So that letter's there for your perusal. And I promised them we would put it on public record, and there it is. So important information for folks. Down to reports and recommendations, we have our monthly permit applications report for October 2019. Things continue to be busy in the Town of Bridgewater. Any questions? Then I would suggest probably directing those to Mr. Hopkins or Mr. Feener. And again, tonight, we had another application for development, so things are moving along quite well. The next item is the fire apparatus pump testing pit tender 19-08. I keep clicking as I'm reading it, so it's reloading. 19-08BFD, and this is to actually cancel the tender, this motion, and to use alternative procurement. I don't know if we need to, do you want to quickly just explain that to the public?
Sure. So council recalls, we had agreed to co-fund essentially the pump test apparatus. We went to tender, it was a tender that would be conditional upon, the award would be conditional upon memorandum of understanding being executed between the town and the municipality to cost share in this apparatus. No one bid on the tender. And therefore, we have, we just need to close the tender by not awarding that. Given the time of year, there's some concern by staff with going back out again, pouring concrete in cold weather, there's complications with that. And some of the contractors closed down their business as that cold weather approaches. And for that reason, they feel that if we go to tender, we may not be able to find someone to bid again. So the staff are suggesting that we use alternative procurement, which means we've gone through the competitive procurement process, no one bid, so we'll try quotes to see if we can get someone to bid. The award is going to be over $25,000, and therefore, as per your procurement policy, you can authorize, normally they come to council for approval, the expense is over that, but you can authorize myself as the CAO to award the procurement as well. So it's recommended we do that. And this would all only be subject to the memorandum of understanding being signed between the town and the municipality of the District of Lunenburg for cost sharing in this apparatus. So a draft MOU has been prepared, has been reviewed by legal counsel, and it has been sent to the District of Lunenburg for comment, to ensure that they're okay with the provisions. But it's a pretty basic MOU that basically just says we're going to cost share, and this and any future capital, those types of things would be cost shared as well.
Any questions, Council McDonald?
Do you have any indication as to why maybe we didn't receive any response?
No, I think that they were a little surprised that we didn't. But it could be just time of year, busy, not too sure.
Council Graves. So was the expectation that this will be done within a couple of weeks?
I would suggest that if the MOU is not approved shortly, then yeah. If it's not, we probably, you'll see it come back again next spring in the budget for reconsideration, unless we have a mild winter. Like, you know, we might play that one by year a bit, but if it doesn't, if it doesn't happen shortly, then we probably won't be doing it.
Because the construction, if the companies are closing down, they don't really recommend pouring concrete. I was wondering if that's something that the town should do, even though I know it's an important piece of infrastructure?
I'd say the weather's going to be a factor. Yeah.
Do they know how long it would take to build this particular thing? Because concrete has to dry out.
That I can't answer, how long exactly it would take.
I would imagine they won't take a risk on, especially if it's contracted out, that contractor, there's going to be some warranty, and I'm sure they wouldn't want to risk having to come back and fix it if they did it when it was too cold or too damp.
Yeah.
So hopefully we get the MOU signed. Council Thorburn.
If I remember correctly, I believe, Tammy, I made the motion this agreements, MOU was between Bridgewater Fire Department and the Northfield Fire Department, and not with MODL.
Initially, it was with Northfield or whomever we could get, but the council was advised that the District of Lunenburg may do this on behalf of the fire departments for the District of Lunenburg. So that is what we came back with and got direction to just continue to negotiate that with them. So instead of Northfield acting on their own, the District of Lunenburg is going to represent all of the fire departments and cost share on that.
As long as this can be done fairly quickly, because my motion was Northfield and Bridgewater, not MODL. And that was a motion that we voted on here that night.
So if it's, legals check the MOU, it's fine?
Yeah, they're fine with it. It's just with the District of Lunenburg right now for their approval.
Deputy Mayor.
Tammy, this will be used by other Lunenburg County fire departments?
Yep.
And has there been any discussion with our fire department on how that other fire departments outside of the municipality would be paying for this, or?
They had, that's why the District of Lunenburg is going to do that on behalf of them.
All of them?
Yeah. But the MOU does address operating cost and capital cost. To rural one fire department, there's what, 23 that would potentially use this? And therefore, we want to ensure that, you know, it's fairly paid for. But I'm told by staff that the operating cost, it's a concrete tank.
Yeah.
It's minimal. The pumps are on the fire trucks, right? So those are their own pieces. Our fire department will be scheduling the use of this too, so that it happens on nights approved by the fire department and doesn't interfere with their operations as well.
Council Graves. Is there an admin cost, going to be an admin cost?
I've talked to the fire chief about that, and he doesn't feel it's going to be that great. It's not something that happens. It'll be just scheduled, it's just a matter of filling out the schedule. And then they show up and they do their own thing.
Without support of town staff?
Yeah.
And Council Thorburn?
Yeah, and Tammy, you've got the Town of Lunenburg and the Town of Mahone Bay that also may wish to use that test pit, because it's quite hard in some areas to get a good location that's both safe and fairly close, and this would be the best thing for everybody. So that's good. Okay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner.
So is MODL including Town of Lunenburg, Town of Mahone Bay as part of this agreement?
I believe District One, District One and District Two provide, Lunenburg's part of that.
Lunenburg provides fire protection to District One, District Two.
So they're not part of this agreement, and the Town of Mahone Bay isn't either. So if they do wish to use this, then we'd have to determine a fee that would apply to them.
Any further questions? Someone prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I guess. So it's a $30,000 project.
It's going to be more than 30, yeah.
So the Town of Bridgewater is paying half for one station, and then MODL is paying for the other half of 23 stations?
Yeah.
And is that supposed to be equally fair?
The.
Because originally, it was just, it was just one, one station.
Originally, we were going to build it on our own. The budget wasn't set like we were going to build it on our own. It was, the fire department had always proposed to partner with as many fire departments as they could, one or more. They had a few there that would be prepared to provide capital, so they had budgeted for 50%. And it's, as I say, it's a concrete tank. And so council said, find a partner to cost share in this. Northfield was interested in doing that, but when MODL stepped up to the plate, they're fine to let MODL do that as opposed to themselves. And the, as I say, the operating costs are minimal to do. It's really the capital that we wanted to recover, and we need a 50% partner in it.
Great deal.
Yeah, it is. I know what you're saying. It is a great deal. If it was something that had a little bit more wear and tear on it every time, like if it was a piece of equipment, then I know where you're going with that, and I think you'd be going down the right, for sure. At least it's just a concrete tank.
Yeah, no, I get it. I do.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll save my long spiel for another topic. Someone prepared to make a motion? Council Frasier.
Yes, you are, Sheriff. That Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater canceled tender 19-08BFD and used the alternative procurement option in the purchasing policy and directed CAO toward this project if a suitable contractor can be found within the approved budget and contingent on the execution of the memorandum of understanding with the Municipality of the District of Lunenburg.
Seconded by Council McDonald. Further discussion? Question being called? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. And I see our very own Leon DeVried is here to walk us through Smart Cities Challenge update, November 2019.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. What you have before you is a fairly brief staff report to let you know that the contribution agreement for Bridgewater Smart Cities Challenge funding arrangement with the Government of Canada is now complete. That does mean that Bridgewater is the first of the Smart Cities Challenge recipients out the gate with a completed funding agreement. In fact, they liked it so much that they're going to make ours the template for the others. So Bridgewater continuing to lead the way. The contribution agreement, as you're aware, provides Bridgewater with $5 million over six fiscal years. So that is $850,000 from the current fiscal year until fiscal year 2023, '24, and then $750,000 for the last fiscal year, which is 2024, '25. With that confirmation of funding, the town can move forward immediately with the hiring of core staff positions to help with the advancement of the program. The first position will actually be posted starting this week, which is the project manager position for the Energize Bridgewater program, and that will be followed closely by an IT specialist position, which we hope to post next week. All staff will be part of the Community Development Department and work under the Director of Community Development. And in principle, all the positions would be posted as five-year term positions working for the town. The positions are, of course, 100% funded by the Smart Cities Challenge grant. And in order to allow staff to move forward with this, as well as a number of contracts that are going to start moving forward for the program, staff recommends that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater increase the current year budget for the Energy Poverty Reduction Program, otherwise known as the Smart Cities Challenge Initiative, from $100,000 to $850,000 to match the projected incoming grant funding. And that, of course, would be fully cost recovered through that grant.
Thank you. Questions? Pretty straightforward. Council Thorburn?
Yeah, the, it's 850,000. Are we going to have that spent by the end of fiscal year? Because next year, there's another 850,000.
So we do not actually intend to spend the full 850,000 this current fiscal year. We intend to spend less than that. However, in the way the program is built, any monies that we don't spend from a current year will actually be allowed to be put into reserve for the program for the next year and so on, in order to allow us to basically create a bit of a float for the program that will then all be spent by the time the program completes. And that's to mitigate risk, to ensure that we don't have to come back to council for additional asks and so on. The remaining amounts will be scheduled in the capital budget. They'll be presented as 850, 850, 850 for each of the remaining years.
So hopefully, at the end of the '23, '24, or the '24, '25 season, then that money should all be spent, and temporary staff will have to complete their assignments.
That is the intention.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Tanner.
Leon, it might be a silly question, but can you explain the percentages in the org chart?
Oh, I see what you're referring to. Yeah.
Some of them don't.
Yeah, so it's a little, yeah, it is a little confusing. So basically, what this is showing is that for a number of staff, they're actually split between certain functions within the department. So as an example, the junior planner position is going to continue doing 25% of their time on planning-related initiatives, and 75% on the sustainability program, which is the Energize Bridgewater Smart Cities program. For myself, there is also a, oh, I see that there's actually a mistake. That should be 85% under sustainability. Now I see what you're meaning when you say, I was like, I don't care where he's going with that. So it's actually 85% under planning for the sustainability planner position, and 15% under sustainability. Other positions, including the onsite energy manager, the remainder of that position is actually intended for facilities, energy management, which is technically under another department.
Oh, okay, got it.
So that's 40% on that one.
Okay.
And I think that covers all those positions.
That's it.
Yeah. Apologies for that mistake.
No, no. Other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion?
Okay, sorry, Deputy Mayor. I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater increase the current year budget for the Energy Poverty Reduction Program from $100,000 to $850,000, reflecting the value to be fully cost-recovered through the Smart Cities Challenge Grant from Infrastructure Canada.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Frasier. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Our next item is the Sustainability Report for 2019. And what's funny is today, in my Facebook memories, actually, my wife's Facebook memories, it was 11 years ago today, was the day we asked Toronto Mayor David Miller if he would maybe like to come to Bridgewater. It was also the exact same day that he said he would come to Bridgewater and do our very first sustainability conference, if you will, that kind of kicked us off, eh, Leon, into high gear where we've been since then.
That is remarkable. I was not aware of that. Yeah.
I thought you timed it just to be here for this.
It's just perfect. Of course.
Perfect. So is someone going to run us through the sustainability? Yeah, okay.
Sure, happy to. This, just to start off, as you reminded me, you know, going down memory lane, this report is actually quite an important moment as well in the sustainability program, because it has been nearly 12 years since the program started with the sustainability initiative starting in early 2008. And it does mark the end of kind of an era on the sustainability and climate change front, and at the same time, so much more which is about to come. And so it is neat to be here today and to have been involved with that process since the beginning. So the 2019. and climate change front, and at the same time, so much more which is about to come. And so it is neat to be here today and to have been involved with that process since the beginning. So the 2019 Sustainability Report, which is attached to your staff or council report there, is being made public as of its publication to council this evening. It is the sixth in a series of reports that talks about the town's sustainability efforts over the past decade, and it is also the last in that series, and the reason for that is that staff is recommending that the program undergo a transition in its primary reporting and it's sort of the face of the program, from shifting from the Integrated Community Sustainability Plan and the Municipal Climate Change Action Plan dated 2010 and 2013 respectively, to a full focus on the Energize Bridgewater Program going forward, which are really the evolution of these sustainability and climate plans. Initiatives that have been carried out under the Integrated Community Sustainability Plan and the Climate Change Action Plan have been numerous. They've included the town's energy management program, the PACE financing program, community gardens, Bridgewater Transit, and many other initiatives that have rolled by over the years. And taking a retrospective look at the implementation of both plans, we see that about 77 percent of the actions in the Sustainability Plan have been partially or fully implemented, and 80 percent of actions under the Climate Change Action Plan have been partially or fully implemented. With the move away from reporting on those plans and it's kind of a new framework for Energize Bridgewater reporting, we are indicating that a number of actions that haven't been fully implemented under those plans will be continued by a number of respective departments within the town, and at the same time, that a number of actions that were written into those plans and are deemed to no longer be organizational priorities or have been made obsolete by other activities that have happened in the intervening time are being recommended for discard, so no longer actively being pursued by staff and town budget lines and so on. The report also, so the report provides quite a bit of detail about those actions and the rationale for which ones would no longer be continued and why they no longer fit within town operations and priority setting. And just an important note, that sometimes you have to let something go in order to make room for something else that you want to focus on, and that area of focus is Town Council's current priorities, as well as, which includes and is part of the implementation of the Energize Bridgewater Program. The report also includes a retrospective on the use of gas tax funding for the past, it's over 10 years at this point that we've tracked that, and that retrospective also really demonstrates the importance of the town's continued investment in its core infrastructure, so roads, water and sewer infrastructure, which has really absorbed the lion's share of gas tax funding and in order to overcome what really is a significant infrastructure deficit, which is something that the I C S P also talked about. So that's now a conversation that the town has been walking through for the past decade. And it's for that reason that the town has needed to shift toward external funding sources to implement Energize Bridgewater in full, and of course, the receiving of the Smart Cities funding is allowing us to move forward unabated in that direction without needing to draw on that important gas tax funding source which needs to go into town infrastructure. So all of this to say that it's not the end of the town's sustainability program, it is in fact the next step in its evolution, and reporting will now focus on those transformational outcomes that are intended by the Energize Bridgewater Program. Among those, a transition to clean energy sources for the community, a reduction and hopefully ultimately elimination of energy poverty within the community, and the development of secure, community-owned energy systems. And a number of those reporting systems were discussed recently at Town Council, the adoption of the Awesome Bridgewater Index as a way to report on that progress, and also we will be moving, thanks to the Smart Cities component of our work, into a number of real-time reporting opportunities as well, where we actually show in real time the community's energy consumption, once those systems come online. So it's an exciting opportunity for transition, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about that transition. There's no recommendations today, this is what staff will be moving forward with.
Questions for Mr. DeVried? No, that was, yeah, it's a very good report, lots of detail. Yeah, it's kind of exciting, if you ask me. All of us will remember, whether we're on council or not, that the I C S P and I remember behind the museum with all the panels that we had and the community coming out to look at, some of the pieces of that and what it's become now, and then with this year winning the Smart Cities Challenge, how it's evolved. As you said, this is just the next stage of its evolution, which should be very exciting. So I was originally a little sad, but now I'm not sad, I'm excited. So hearing no questions, thank you very much for that. And we'll move on to our next item, which is second and final reading of the Revised Solid Waste Bylaw, currently chapter 127. Do we have any information, any new information for the public, or?
No.
Have these really changed?
No, it's, the changes are really to reflect our new waste collection contract and our changes in our service levels with respect to waste collection, in which they're increasing and our costs are going down per household, so it's a positive thing, and this would be second and final, so once this is done, we do our notice of approval and it would be effective. The changes come into effect April 1st, 2020 with a new waste collection contract.
Any questions, Council Grace?
We talked in previous council meetings about 80-liter waste green bins, and there's no real mention of 80-liter green bins in that section. And then we'd also mentioned about the fact that if there was a way deflecting usable products out of the waste stream, so somebody may put in a plastic bucket that's no use to you, but for them, it might have many uses. And with the new system, because the way it's set up on a weekly basis, people are not going to have the opportunity to pick out...
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they're working on that.
We are going to have a curbside pickup type day, a special waste curbside day, I can't remember the exact term, Sue's working on that right now with the Joint Services Board. She's going to propose that to the board, so it's somewhat, I think, perhaps ahead of the game here to discuss, the board hasn't heard it yet.
Right.
But the intent is that we would have a day in 2020 where, much like in H R N, you can put your waste, your items to the curb, people can come pick through what they wish to have, and then at the end of the day, what's left, you take it back into your house or your garage or whatever it is, you don't leave it at the curb, so. And then weekly, we'll be doing the bulky waste pickup, or biweekly sorty, and so those things that don't go, you can bring them back out and have them picked up.
So the bylaw doesn't preclude the M G S B from doing this?
That's right, those are special...
There's no mention of it, yeah.
No, it's just, those are initiatives outside of the bylaw that we can do, and this will be a pilot to see if people will cooperate and take the waste that doesn't get, you know, taken away by others back, so it doesn't stay at the curb. That's probably the biggest risk in that.
And then in regards to the 80-liter bins?
Those ones there, my understanding is council wanted us to create some awareness within our newsletter about the fact that they are available.
Because they're senior-friendly and...
Yeah.
Does it have to be incorporated in the bylaw, or can it just be we make up?
I think we can, and we can look at our fees policy in terms of what we would charge for them. I don't know what the fee is right now for them, or if there is one.
So if it's in the fees policy, then it's more flexible than putting it in the bylaw then, right?
Mm-hmm.
So we can work on that.
Yeah.
And your comments are very important for the curbside pickup, and so we'll just kind of, M G S B will put that on their agenda, and perhaps, I mean, we will advise council when that's on there, but if you just keep that in the back of your mind, so that we don't drop it, Council Grace, so just remind us every so often if you haven't heard back from us.
And just one more comment about that, I think it should be probably twice a year in a good month.
Yeah.
And I also think that it should be on the same day as the, I don't think people are going to bring this stuff back. They'll put it out and they'll separate it, you can probably get them to do that, take them to bring it back, and I'll keep this down. So just a comment, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's on the record.
And I think the idea of the bulky waste collection is that people aren't going to have a lot hanging around, but they will, if you feel you have an item that you might want to make available to someone who's not going around looking on a biweekly basis, then there's an organized day for that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Good, thank you, Q. Council Thorburn?
Yeah, Tammy, the electronics, is that at a certain time of year? I think I read that.
There will be an electronic waste pickup, yeah, and it will be a scheduled time, yeah.
Yeah, it's too bad it couldn't have been with the regular garbage, and then once you get patterned to do it, now you've got to keep that stuff around.
Yeah, but right now, they're not able to be collected, and you have to take them to a depot, so this is bringing a convenience to the home.
Well, it is convenient in a way, but it's not convenient in another way, because I can get rid of my old TV tomorrow, which I have to take it, now I got to let it set default until they decide they want to pick it up.
You can still take it if you wish to.
Can you still take it?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Miss Porter-Lowis is advised, this topic is coming to a discussion session in January for us to discuss the curbside pickup and the...
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion?
Council Frasier?
Yes, the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approved the second and final reading of the Solid Waste Bylaw as presented in document 19-136, adopt as bylaw effective April 1st, 2020, to be known as chapter 203, and authorized staff to publish all public notices pursuant to section 168 of the Municipal Government Act.
Thank you, seconded by Council Grace, further discussion? Had a pretty good one. Hearing none, of course, being called, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Our next item is land purchase. So we discussed this a while ago.
This is basically a housekeeping matter to have a motion of council with respects to how we, at the end of the day, fund the land acquisition that we had on Foley Lane, and the recommendation from our Director of Finance is that that come from capital reserves, and it would be in the amount of $110,257.86.
Someone prepared to make a motion, Council Thorburn?
I would move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve funding from the capital reserves in the amount of $110,257.86 for a completed land purchase.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner, any discussion?
Question?
Question being called, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Next item is donation, South Shore Fieldhouse Society, and as always, I'll remind the public that this is not a town making a donation, what we do is individuals come in and they make a donation through the town to the fieldhouse, and so we, as the kind of the keepers of that money, then when it's requested by the Fieldhouse Society, we give it to them. So I just always want to make sure people understand, because they can also come and make a donation to the fieldhouse if they so choose by coming into Town Hall. Someone prepared to make a motion? Council McDonald?
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve a grant in the amount of $400 to the South Shore Fieldhouse Society for the multi-use facility on Glen Allen Drive as per document 19-151.
Thank you, seconded by Council Frasier, any discussion?
Question?
Question being called, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. And our last item is new business, again, for the public, as they know, we had published ads in the paper for a committee for council renumeration review. This is done prior to municipal election, which is in the fall of 2020, and I think Bridgewater's been very progressive when it comes to municipal government, because we've used citizens to review that renumeration, we do not set our own, so it's open, transparent, and I think a really good practice, and I know that I believe Lunenburg is now going that way or considering going that way. So proud that many councils have used that public citizen group to do that, and so today is, I'm asking council to officially appoint the members that have, or the public that have applied for this position. If someone is prepared to make that motion, Council Thorburn?
I would move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater appoint Palma Schimpel, Corey Rogers, and John Swain to the ad hoc council of renumeration review committee in accordance with policy 64, annual renumeration adjustment for the council member.
Thank you, Council, seconded, please. Deputy Mayor Tanner, any discussion?
Question?
Question being called, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, and we have one in-camera item following this meeting for discussing a property matter. Hearing nothing else, motion to adjourn?
Shall move.
Council Thorburn, seconded by Council Frasier, we are adjourned, thank you.